Beginning of our Waterloo Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I would take an approval or motion on the agenda. Simba?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side. Uh, the minutes. I want to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, motion carries. Financial report.
This is Anderson with staff. The financial report you were sent in the packet is through August 31st, 2016, which puts us at 16.6% for the year. Essentially, as you go through the sheets, for the P&amp;Z totals at this point, for expenses, we're at 13%, so we're below where we should be. Revenue, we're at 7% and of course, a lot of that is based on property sales, so that comes randomly throughout the year as we get property sales. The recreation area revenue is at 36%, so we're seeing a lot of good activity out at Brinker Lake through the mining materials, so other than that, we're right where we should be.
Thank you. Place that on file. All presentations, anything that is not currently on the agenda, if any member of the audience would like to speak on those issues, now is your time to do so. Alright, seeing none. New business, requests by JDE Engineering on behalf of City of Waterloo for the final plat of Northeast Industrial Park, plat number four. Steph?
That's Andero Staff. This is a request to plat the property for the purpose of creating 10 industrial lots. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and would appear that the proposed uses that would occur on the site would be compatible with already existing light industrial development in the area. Would not appear to have negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. It is served by MLK Drive to the south and Newell Street to the north, and both those streets are classified as minor arterials. One new street is shown being extended through the new subdivision and is named Assemblyway. Area in question is zone M2P, planned industrial district and was rezoned from A1 Ag District to such in October of 1995. Surrounding land uses and their zonings are as follows: to the north vacant ground, zoned A1; south vacant development ground, zoned M2P; east existing industrial development, zoned M2P; and west vacant development ground, zoned A1. No buffers would be required as a part of this plating request. The plat submitted, plat shows a 30-foot storm sewer and drainage easement running east and west located along lots 1 and 2 and 6 and 7. As each site is developed, it will be necessary that a stormwater detention plan is submitted to show how stormwater will be detained on the site. About the eastern 25% of the property is located within the special flood hazard area, zone EE, 100-year flood plain. This particular area on the plat is labeled as tract C. There are 15-foot utility easements shown on the frontages of all lots within the subdivision and there's an 80-foot wide narrowing down to a 50-foot wide utility easement along the southern portions of lots 5 and 10. Future land use map does designate this area as industrial and this plat would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. Final plat consists of 10 lots and two terracotta length containing approximately 61 acres of land, which is located to the east of 1994 Newell Street, between Newell Street and MLK Drive. Lot sizes range from 8.59 acres at its largest to 3.51 acres at the smallest. Site is zone M2P, planned industrial district, so when a lot is developed, it will be necessary that such new developments go through the site plan amendment process before the planning commission and then onto the city council. As lots are developed, it will be necessary for each development to submit and execute an approved landscaping plan as well. Staff is currently working on the following item that needs to be submitted and we are still needing a certificate of survey from the surveyor to be submitted. Besides the noted item, the plat appears to be showing all other items detailed on the final plat list. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the final plat for Northeast Industrial Park, plat number four. As one, the request would not appear to have negative impact on the surrounding area. Two, the request would not appear to have negative impact upon pedestrian or traffic conditions in the area. Three, the request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area, which designated as industrial. And four, the subdivision would appear to be similar to adjacent industrial subdivisions in the area and with the condition that the final plat is updated and additional documents are submitted as required by staff before the request is sent to city council.
Any additional questions for staff?
Yes, I've got a question about the item is, are all the concerns outlined about the item within the tech notes or the notes on the technical review committee, have all those concerns been answered? Seeing we had eight questions that were left unanswered as of July, the last time this item was before us.
So some of the items or questions that are brought up in the most recent technical review committee meeting back on September 27th, we are still kind of trying to work out some of those minor details with the engineer on the project to get those all taken care of before we do send any such requests as this to the city council. So there are some little minor details which staff doesn't believe is a major issue at this time.
Okay. So that would not preclude our approving the item because we did have those items that preclude our approval of the final plat last time in July?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Alright, any further discussion amongst the commission? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll move that the request of the final plat of Northeast Industrial Park, plat number four be approved because it would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding area, would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian and traffic conditions within the surrounding area. It's in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area, which designates it as industrial, and the subdivision would appear to be similar to adjacent industrial subdivisions in the area with the following condition, that the plat is updated and additional documents are submitted as required by staff before the request is sent to city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, motion carries. Now, we've got a request by Edward Tlaskits, vacated portion of city-owned right-of-way adjacent to 1110 Randolph Street. Staff report.
Andero Staff again. Vacate areas located at the intersection of West 9th and Randolph Street. Does not appear that this would have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. There would, there will still be some remaining right of way to the north of the vacate areas, so there are no concerns for site visibility for traffic. Vacation of the right-of-way would not appear to have negative impact on drainage in the area. Site's not located within the flood plain. There are no sanitary or storm sewers running through the area in question. There are four-inch drain tiles located within West 9th Street and Randolph Street. There is an overhead electrical line near the vacate area and the surveyor for the plat has indicated that the overhead line is outside the vacate area, therefore, no utility easements need to be retained. They are requesting to vacate 189 square feet of city right-of-way. The applicant wishes to vacate this area for the purpose of constructing a new two-stall driveway to park his vehicles on. Currently, there is no off-street parking for the property and he does have to park on the street. Applicant did mention that there are many rental units in the area, which mostly utilize on-street parking, and vacating the right-of-way and constructing the new driveway would help alleviate on-street parking constraints in the area. A zoning ordinance requires for a single dwelling unit that there'd be two off-street parking stalls with a maximum of 50% of those parking stalls required may be represented by garage spaces. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the vacate request at West 9th and Randolph Streets as the request would not appear to have a negative impact on this surrounding area. This appears to be excess right-of-way that is no longer needed for any future public purposes. The request would not appear to have negative impact upon pedestrian and traffic conditions in the area. And three, there are no utilities within the area to be vacated and subject to the following conditions, that access to the parcel is only allowed from Randolph Street. And two, that the driveway approach and sidewalk cut are constructed to city specifications.
Alright, any additional questions for staff? Thank you. Any additional discussion amongst the commission? Do we have a motion on the request?
So moved to approve the motion as outlined in the staff report.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, motion carries. Now got a couple of plans and studies, request by City of Waterloo for the extension of the city limits urban revitalization area, the CLURA program. Staff?
Andero Staff, just a, and you have a memo in your packet here, so talking about the CLURA, just kind of a little history behind it. In March of 2010, the city put together the GROW Committee, which worked to examine and brainstorm ways to get more housing constructed in Waterloo. Individuals involved with the group comprised of realtors, developers, Waterloo school reps, landowners, financial institution staff, appraisers, and obviously, planning and zoning staff. They did analyze past and current trends of housing in the city, values of those homes and lots being created and available in the city. They also reviewed what other communities have done to stimulate housing, such as free lots from the city, TIF districts, urban revive areas, row constructions, or row construction for the streets, for the plats by the city. So they did come to the conclusion that they would come up with the city limits urban revitalization area that provided a three-year tax abatement for either a one or two-family dwelling, and the city council approved such program in July of 2011 to allow for that three-year abatement, and then the program was then renewed again in 2014. So the overall trend of housing previous to the CLURA was in a downward trend compared to previous years. So the first five years leading up to the CLURA, the following housing numbers were in 2007, 42; 08 was 21; 09 was 28; 10 was 38; and 11 was 55. Since the adoption in 2011, housing numbers have greatly improved. The following numbers are for the past five years after the adoption of the CLURA, so in 2012, there were 62; 13, 45; 14, 90; 15, 69; and 2016 FY was 99. So if you compare those numbers for the previous five years before the adoption, there were 184 single-family units constructed compared to 365 single-family units constructed for the first five years after the adoption of the program, which represents an increase of 98.3%. Program is bringing a wide array of new housing with permit valuations ranging from around $70,000 to as high as $880,000. Should be noted that once the full assessment of the house is determined by the Blackhawk County, those assessments are typically higher than what the permit valuation is, thus bringing in new tax revenue to the city once the three-year abatement is completed, which otherwise may not have been, otherwise may not have been constructed in Waterloo without this program in place. Also, numbers for the two-family dwellings have also picked up with a total of 52 two-family dwellings being constructed since the adoption of this program. Staff is suggesting that the new extension of the CLURA be along the same lines as the consolidated urban revitalization area, otherwise known as KIRA. Under the planned termination for the KIRA district, it does state, "When in the opinion of the city council, the desired level of revitalization has been attained or the economic conditions areas such as that the continuation of the revitalization plan will not benefit the community, the city council may repeal the ordinance designating the program. At that time, all existing exemption agreements will be honored until there are no expiration date." This staff is proposing that the wording, that this wording be used in the CLURA. The program appears to be working very well. The staff is requesting that the planning commission make a recommendation on extending of the CLURA for an unspecified timeline. Once that recommendation is made, the staff will then forward this request onto city council.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just a note, this is Anderson with staff, that's the chart that was handed out as well in front of you on the table, so it kind of shows those housing numbers in a bar graph. So you can kind of see the difference between the single-family, the duplexes, the multifamily and the total for the fiscal year.
So you're basically asking it to be open-ended?
Correct. We're making it, we're trying to make it similar wording as the KIRA.
So until the council decides to, okay.
And as we noted a little bit, some of the reason for that, we're already starting to get calls now from housing, potential homeowners and developers that get nervous about, hey, am I not going to do an investment to make another 12-lot subdivision or something, not knowing if this is going to be there the whole time. So we think it would be a better choice to go ahead and set it up like the KIRA and not have that uncertainty so we can continue the trend we're seeing in new housing development.
Is there currently any sort of education or communication with the incoming homeowner about what to expect once that three years is up?
Um, no, I guess there's not. You know, other than, we kind of expect that they would talk that over with their financial institute when they're getting their mortgage and all that, but we don't really have anything. And it would be difficult to kind of set that up because you wouldn't know exactly what the levy is going to be in the future. We could probably put together though some sheets that would at least give them an idea of what that might be. That's not a bad idea because, and we have a frequently asked questions sheet that we give out with the CLURA. And the CLURA form itself, I don't know if we probably could have brought some, but they're pretty self-explanatory in kind of going through everything on that and then the frequently asked questions, when it goes through a lot of the questions that they'd normally have had, we could actually add to that and say, here's kind of what you might expect once it's over.
This is Schrader with staff, I, we didn't bring that form with us, but I know it does kind of go through a note on a typical house value to, I think if I remember right, I think it gives like two or three different price ranges. This is approximately how much it would typically pay in taxes. It does that for purposes of kind of showing how much benefit you can get out of the TIF, but the other part of that is that, you know, kind of puts you on notice for what you can expect for paying taxes once the three-year program runs out, but we can certainly look at wording that to make that a little more clear.
Yeah, just recognizing that there is, you know, such things being housed for, right? And so, especially if we're incentivizing to the point where it's saving someone a couple thousand dollars, they then adjust their lifestyle accordingly and as much as we can avoid foreclosures and that sort of thing, I think is, is ideal.
Do we have any further discussion either amongst commission or audience members? Do we have a motion?
This is Tyson, I would like to head our committee accept the plans and studies of the city limits urban revitalization area and the two requests on Martin Road Development Plan.
We got, we have, here is our second.
Okay, alright.
We can.
You want to do them all at once or just, you want to just wait?
Probably do the CLURA first and then the TIF after.
Okay, alright.
But if we have a request, was that a amended motion then to approve the CLURA?
Extension?
Okay, I'll make that.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Alright. All in favor of extending the CLURA? Say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, motion carries. Alright. Now, the request for the city to amend Martin Road Development TIF.
This is Schrader with staff, there was a memo included in the packet as well as a couple of maps, just briefly. This is dealing with the Martin Road, urban renewal and TIF district area around Martin Road, Ridgeway, US 63 South. There was a map that shows the original area, which was done back in 1996. There was an amendment one area that expanded that further to the south, south of Ridgeway and south along US 63. An amendment two area expanded it further south. And here recently, I think it was March or February or March of 2016, we did a small amendment three, just to add one more parcel east of 63 on the north side of Ridgeway. This is an economic development TIF, so it's subject to a 20-year sunset. The original area is getting very close to sun setting and the First Amendment area is a few years out there, but we're already starting to look at undeveloped areas within this and how we're going to be able to continue to get these areas developed facing that sunset. So what we are proposing to do is to do two amendments. There are two separate amendments on the agenda, but they are certainly related. We're proposing to first amend the TIF district to remove several areas from the TIF district. Once it is removed, that area is released into any increment value that's been currently being captured by the TIF is released to the other taxing entities as well as the city's general fund. The second amendment then will put most of those areas back in the TIF district. Again, that release, that doesn't affect that a release, the areas put back in would have a new frozen base based on their current values, so only new increment from new development moving forward would get captured by that TIF district. We believe this is the best model trying to move forward for the development of this area. Any questions?
This is me, have property owners been notified that are in this area?
No, there's no provision in the code for notification of property owners.
It won't affect the property owners anyway, will it? I mean, they'll still be paying the same amount, that's just how that's distributed after they pay, right?
Correct. The only way it would affect a property owner is if it's not in a TIF, then that limits the city's ability to provide incentives to encourage development, so I would say it could negatively impact those property owners if not done, but I'm not aware of, you know, any negative issue from a property owner standpoint in approving the amendment.
Okay. Now, I have a question, but it's a question about the agenda item, like on the agenda itself. What's the difference between what are you doing in item two and item three? That makes the two items different. I mean, I understand that we're taking, taking portions out and then putting them back in and then on the maps, they're the same kind of shape or the same area.
Yeah, they're not identical, so if you look on the map that's on the screen, which is page 38 in your packet, you'll see in the southwest corner, there's a parcel that's red, but then if you look on page 30, so that little parcel that's in the southwest corner that's red is proposed to be removed, and then if you look on page 39, that one's not getting added back in. That's a cleanup measure, there's a parcel there that's actually split by the old railroad tracks there, and the code does not allow for a parcel to be split by the TIF district, so we either needed to add the other side of the railroad tracks in or get this one out. At this point, it was cleanest just to remove this, there's no pending plans for development of that. So other than that one parcel, all of the rest of them are identical. In the one action, they're showing the parcels being removed, and then in the other action, it's showing all of those same parcels except for that one being put back in. So what does that effectively do to the TIF district for those areas that, if you can scroll to the page 39, the blue, page 39 in your map, the blue parcels, those areas are already in the TIF district now, they will be removed, then put back in the TIF district, so the only difference from what's theirs now is that they will have a new 20-year sunset.
Okay. Does that mean the areas south of Highway 20 and every, well, and I understand south and north of Highway 20, a lot of them have development plans in place probably, is that fair to assume?
A lot of the existing development would have a development, I mean, either predates having a development agreement or has a development agreement, yes.
Yeah, this is pretty much all the vacant land.
My question is for the area south of Highway 20, I guess, that's not being put it back in, does that mean we're gonna, there will be no longer TIF incentives? Those will sunset out and...
And that one, that one was fairly new, so it has a number of years left.
Yeah, that was done in 2000.
The Second Amendment?
Correct.
Yes, yes, the Second Amendment was done in, let me find it here.
So really you have a concern on the first?
2014. Yeah, we really only have a concern on the original and the First Amendment is not, is getting close enough now. It was done in 2004. The sunset is actually based on when debt was certified, not, you know, based on when it was approved, but, so I don't know the exact date of when the First Amendment would sunset, but it's getting close enough out there that as you're looking at proposed developments and providing an incentive package, that the payback period to ensure that enough taxes would be collected in, by that TIF district to provide those incentives are starting to be close, so that's why we're already proposing now to fix the amendment one area. But yeah, the amendment two area was just done in 2014, so we're nowhere near the sunset area for that.
We tried to look at what we thought was needed for additional infrastructure to go into this area and get it developed and then provide the best financial model to ensure that it gets developed. Obviously, with any TIF, the TIF money must go to repay the city's debt in these areas, so obviously, once they're fully built out and there's no more debt being made into them because it's built out, then we can release the TIF. And again, we thought this was the best financial model to push forward for development of this area.
I have a specific lot question here. I noticed we've kind of worked our way around, you know, if I go in the Greyhound Park area, you got Maurer and the, oh, the cardiologist and some of those areas, but the church to the south, you know, they have undeveloped, or it's a parking lot, is there a reason why that wasn't, you know, that could be a future buildable lot theoretically correct? Is there a reason why that was left out?
No, where were you at, Matt?
I'm talking about, you know, I'm talking about.
Yep, yeah, it's, yeah, it's right on the map there.
I don't recall that we had a specific discussion.
Yeah, we can look at that.
Okay. I'm trying to think if there's any along the, north of what Cyclone Drive, is that, and if there's any, I think they're pretty well built out there, but I guess the question is, have we double-checked to make sure that there's, property owners, I guess, are aware of this and if they had a concern, they could, you know, bring it to our attention as well, but... to our attention as well, but.
And for the most part, it's primarily for property owners. It's Harold Young Blut for Green Belt Development, Rick Young, the city of Waterloo, and then Dalstrom.
Do we have any further discussion? I figured you weren't just here for the fun of PP and Z.
Nonetheless, I take my hat off because you're not the council, but I will. David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I really am bothered a little bit by, in the spirit of transparency, and this is not your problem, this is the council last night, I brought up this grapevine issue, and nobody at the council said anything about the fact that this meeting was coming up today to let the public know that you might be meeting on this. The other thing that we have asked is, and I'll say it this way, the back row boys, is that when a TIF is about to expire, don't renew it until you fill the other TIFs in. Do you have a designated destiny for this, like you did for the Johnstone Building? Whoops, no, you didn't. But we bought that, and there's nobody going to be planning to go in there, to my knowledge. And do we have somebody that's going to want to consider going into these areas that you want to renew for another 20 years? And these things just keep piling up, that we keep money in the TIF, money in the TIF, money in the TIF. How much money's in the TIF, in all the TIF districts? That are, is literally and essentially taxpayer money. We keep seeing that you guys approve these expansions or whatever, that somewhere along the line, TIF was originally initiated to help the taxpayer, and all we're seeing is that we keep it in this little nice kitty of how much, how many millions of dollars is in the TIF, that we keep being able to spend $50,000 a year for three years for somebody to come in and do what I feel is our planning and zoning and our people that are on staff to do. And then at the same time, we can find money in the TIF to spend, I think I saw in the paper, something like $1.8 million to do something else in a TIF area. Sooner or later, because of the fact that we do not get taxpayer relief, it falls back on the taxpayer. And I feel personally, and I know there's a lot of other people in this city that all do too, but they won't come down here and represent us, that you guys need to start watching our dollars because we're the ones that ultimately pay the price. Thank you.
Thank you.
And everyone's entitled to their opinion.
I guess Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I guess what Mr. Dreyer said, I guess he was right. Wasn't TIF actually developed to give the property tax owners relief?
I would argue that it is giving the property tax owners relief. If the city was bonding for all this infrastructure without the TIF in place, we would get about forty percent, forty cents in the dollar of what we're getting back now to repay ourselves so the bonded indebtedness would be a lot higher. Or you wouldn't see any development out here because we wouldn't compete with Cedar Falls or adjoining states which all use TIF. So actually, you'd see, this would be vacant land. Agricultural land doesn't pay much in taxes.
Yeah, but we're paying more for agricultural land than what it's worth. No, we're paying a lot more.
That's a state issue, that's not a city issue.
South of, huh?
That's a state issue if you don't think ag land is a tax thing.
Well, it's based on their.
This is the city of Waterloo.
It's based on their statistics, what ag land is worth and what we paid for out on the other end of Forest Street. We're paying a lot more for ag land.
That's actually development land according to the.
And the thing about it was, you compare Waterloo with Cedar Falls, if you go over to Industrial Park, there's no comparison. They're beating us to death.
Again, everyone's entitled to their opinion.
That's right. That's what I'm doing.
I think we've actually had more taxable value over the last five years than they have.
How much, how much TIF money have you put in the general fund for taxpayers?
How much TIF money have they put in the general fund if you want to compare us to Cedar Falls?
Well, I really don't know.
That's a pretty similar answer.
I really don't know. But how much has Waterloo put?
Then you probably shouldn't ask that question.
How much has Waterloo put in our general fund to give us tax relief?
I think you've saved money from the general fund.
I, what I asked, no. I said, how much money have you put in the general fund to give us tax relief? None.
From this business development? I would say a lot more money has gone in the general fund because we created jobs and businesses here, which brings forth houses and people buying, which brings businesses because there's customers.
Somebody took a study on how many empty houses we got in Waterloo, and all you're doing is building, and we're not filling up the houses now.
So you think we should stop building houses?
Pardon me?
You think we should stop building houses?
Well, you better, you better fill up the ones you got empty.
So what's your solution to that?
Bring more people here. Bring some industrial.
That's what we're doing.
Bring some industrial.
I can't force them to build, to go into an existing house instead of building a house. That's their choice.
Well, that's their choice, but you give it away for a dollar, you give tax abatements so they do, and that falls on.
But that's what they do in Cedar Falls and you're arguing against us doing that.
And that falls on the taxpayers too.
But they give it away for a dollar in Cedar Falls as well, but you're saying that they're doing it right and we're doing it wrong?
No, that falls on the taxpayer too.
How's it fall on the taxpayer?
Because our taxes are going up, they, they're getting tax abatements. We ain't getting any tax abatements.
But they, it is bringing in taxes because it's bringing in houses and people and school students.
But.
You know.
Again, you can have your opinion.
For interrupting.
Sure.
Can I ask a question here? You said they're getting tax abatements. Aren't they paying the same taxes as they would if they weren't in the TIF? It's just that whatever value goes over and above what the baseline is, then they're paying that amount of tax into the TIF instead of into the county, the city, and the schools.
And actually, a portion always goes to debt service levy too, and our CFO is here, she wants to expand more on that, but that actually saves the general fund from having that burden as well. So it actually does help the general fund in that direct way too.
Well, I think our general fund is going down, not up, so that's my opinion.
I don't believe that's correct.
All right. Do we have a, do we have a motion either way on, I would assume we can combine these motions to reduce and enlarge, but it's up to the commission. I'll hear it either way.
I want to make one final question, you know, related to my comment. I think there's a, I see at least one property owner that may be adversely affected by it, by removing it and then not adding it back in, I guess. So my question is, is, should we table this item, should we?
You could make a motion and have us look at that parcel to add it back in if it makes sense to do so.
Which one are?
It's the parking lot south of the.
We're not removing that, so it's still in the TIF and it can still have.
But it's not getting extended though either with the early sunset.
Right, so, and I don't know the exact sunset date on that one, but I think it's somewhere in at least like seven or eight years out. So we could still do a development agreement with it, and then, you know, if we don't get a development agreement on that specific property within the next couple of years, we could look at doing a similar action to remove and extend it. I guess my concern on trying to change this one now is it could require kind of essentially a start-over, which is really going to hamper with our timeline that we're working with.
And I was also going to say, can we, I mean, I understand, Matt, that you have this concern about the single parcel, but I'd rather not, you know, table the whole item to another meeting when there's more than just the single parcel. So can we excise your item or what you're talking about into another meeting if we want to table that part of it and consider the rest of it in this, at this meeting?
I mean, it is remaining in the TIF, so you'd have, there'd be plenty of time to look at that in the future.
So again, I will, I'll entertain a motion for either 2C and 2B or the item.
Do we need to have a motion to combine the items first?
No.
I got one more question. What's the timeline that we're dealing against? What, 10 years left? Is that what I heard?
This item will be on Monday's city council agenda to set a date of consultation with the taxing entities and a date of hearing. We are tentatively looking.
But he, he was asking about the existing.
Oh.
When it will run out.
Oh.
I think it's in nine or 10 years.
Yeah, it's 2004, and Michelle might have a better memory on this, so it probably had debt certified in 2005, so 20 years from 2005.
2025.
Would be an approximate.
Nine or 10.
Sound right, Michelle?
Sure. I just brought that up here, sorry.
So it should be somewhere around 2025.
Again, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to, you know, I don't know, I heard the correct answer other than we have action, I'm just going to city council, but my, my recommendation or my motion would be to table it and let's confirm that every, you know, that everybody is aware of this now and can make sure that they're corrected, I guess, if they have a voice, so that'd be my recommendation.
Do we have a second to table?
I'll second that.
Do we have a second to table?
Does it cause a concern?
I would prefer that it not be tabled to ensure we stay on a timeline, but the proposed action on Monday, city council, to set a date of hearing is for November 14th, and there is a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting ahead of that, so it can still stay on the proposed timeline.
The concern is if we get slowed down, we would want to stay ahead of where the assessor goes out and does reassessments for the year in January 1.
Yeah.
So that's where it would be a concern to table.
Michelle Weidner, CFO, that also, I saw that, Noel.
I said, yes, he's the chair, so.
The risk that, I think there's another risk for the assessor has a lot of work to do to change this, and we're going to, you are going to be crunching their timeframe.
I can understand that. My only concern is that, you know, going back to changing this for one person, in the essence that 10, 10 years down the road, nothing's happened, it'll be, wouldn't it be a difficult task for them to look out exclusively for their lot?
Potentially, and I'm not familiar with which lot we're talking about, so I don't, I don't have enough background to be able to discuss that particular parcel.
Sure.
I'm more concerned about developments that we have ready to go, that we need to be able to help so that we get them there. So that, that is the concern that I and probably planning staff are sharing today.
I guess I, this is Anderson with staff, I do not have a concern with the single lot. If, if for some reason we were up there and there was a pending project or something like that, I, I think it would be pretty standard paperwork for us to make the project work. The council's number one goal is economic development, as stated in their policies. They've generally been very friendly in working with landowners and developers and companies for projects here to bring in taxable value in businesses.
Let me ask you this. Is, is it, would it be available to them if they fall into an Amendment Two area or Amendment Three area, some of these later sunsetted areas that, you know, again, if 10 years down the road or whenever those things start getting closer to sunset, and we look at the same areas, can we, is that a time where they could be reexamined?
Definitely. I mean, you can see how Eric kind of did some work on that southern part as part of this one, as we were, again, evaluating this overall one. We looked at that and fixed something down there as well. And I think, you know, just talking about the map and the, the number of amendments here, and specifically Amendment Number Three area where the Dalstrom group bought land from the cemetery, which again is great news because you're turning in land that was never going to be taxed into development area. We acted pretty quickly on that to include that in the, the next amendment area of Number Three to move ahead so that they could move ahead with some projects that are pending right now. So we acted pretty quickly there again on a project-by-project basis, so I'm not concerned about that lot that you brought up, Matt, from a standpoint of moving ahead.
I'll make, if I could revise my motion.
Okay.
In an effort to, I'll make a motion to approve the Items Two and Three, the amendment to Martin Road Development Plan in TIF District to reduce the area included thereon in Item Three, to enlarge the area included thereon.
I can, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to approve the recution and enlarging of the TIF district as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, that motion carries. All right, any discussion items? All right, you need a motion to adjourn?
We used to do one, yes.
All right. I move adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Very good. Aye. Good meeting.
[laughing].